Okay, folks, we're gonna call this meeting in order and we'll stand for the pledge if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Some people here tonight, that's nice. Brooke and Ben are here for after-school programming. You're on.
All right. We can probably give you a little update of what we've been up to and it's kind of an in-motion thing. So, we started meeting with different stakeholders between Poltonee and Fairhaven after some of the incidences that had occurred back in the spring with students that we shared between GRCSU and Slate Valley. And the motivation was how can we pool resources, what can we do to support kids after school? Because a lot of these things were happening outside of school. And so, we've been going in a bunch of different directions with this, ranging from, you know, talking with new owners of a bike shop in Poltonee called Porcupine, starting up like a Bike Works program. And I think the Greater Rutland is throwing, like, a younger, for the younger kids, a Boys and Girls Club after-school program, similar to what we do in Slate Valley. And the biggest thing that I've really been focusing on, because it's kind of more in my wheelhouse, working with middle and high school, is looking at a teen center. So, myself and Joe DeVannes are both writing similar grants through the hills and hollows. It was submitted about a week ago. I think it usually takes them maybe five, six weeks till it's good over, so it's still in the waits. And what we're hoping to do is be able to pull some funding together to help start something. And the reason, kind of, reaching out to Joe and landing here is seeing how we can pool resources with the towns as well. And the goal is to try to create some sort of after-school hub for our teens to be able to go to and whether it's just hooking up with mentors or, you know, coming in and having game nights, so whatever it might be, and that's kind of the main goal. The purpose of the grant itself is, well, I think it would really, it would rely on volunteerism. We feel it's really important to have a key person that gets paid for the work of organizing. And so, it's kind of this forming thing. Does it look like it's one town doing something separate from the other? Do we look at a way of bringing two towns together? And we've been just exploring a lot of different options and I think we're gonna sit and talk with all of you on this. But you know what we're doing is a really useful part of the process too.
One of the things that's happening, it's kind of coincidental, there's more, there's a new interest in a rec committee in Fairhaven. So, there may be some, there may be some cross, you know, cultivation there that may happen. I don't know, but I, you guys should get in touch with each other and I will, you know, I'll make sure that they know you're doing what you're doing. Do you have any, any idea of locations or anything like that yet, or is it too early?
So, that's been one of the things we talked about. So, to mirror what was said over in Poltonee, we were kind of, I'll admit, I live in Poltonee as well, so I was kind of pushing, like, it seems natural to have the hub being the high school itself, but there was some pushback on that idea for good reason, and I, you know, thinking about it and kind of reflecting on it. Completely understand and I think I agree with it, which is if you have students at the end of the day that are just ready to get out of school, or if you have students that have an unsuccessful day at school and maybe it's, you know, them staying in that setting isn't appropriate for the school, then you have a whole separate location that's more town-centered. So, in Poltonee, they're talking about, the, I don't think it's owned by the Catholic Church, I don't know exactly how it works, but there's a separate building that has a basketball court in it or the Young at Heart behind the school, locations like that. So, I mean, I think that's something that I'm really curious to look at in Fairhaven as well. I think the school is a resource, but it's a valid point of how you, it might be time where you want to separate the two and how you kind of create a link between the town and the school to support each other and pool the resources. I think this sort of particular work and how we work that out.
What, what do you think the town's role would be? I mean, do you have, have you envisioned some sort of role or some, or is it too early in the stage, planning stages for that as well?
I think we're looking for a community partnership, because some of these instances are things that are occurring after-school hours. And so, really, how, what do we have for our students to be engaged with after-school? And so, it can't just be the school that tries to solve that problem. So, really coming together as a community and trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're going to address those issues. So, I think we're looking for a partnership with different organizations to figure that out. And right now, it seems to be our seventh through ninth graders primarily.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
And it's, it sounds a little, I bumped into Jeff King from Poltonee and we had a good, and I was looking over because Chad, who is another member of the board, he'll be here a little later. I got him introduced to Chad, saying, hey, we have a recreation committee that we're getting together here and we have a similar issue with our, that age group that really needs something, as you do. Absolutely, the timing's right. It's, what it's gonna look like is, who knows, but that's, that's okay. I, I look at us here and we're probably going into our, like, our graded school gym or high school gym. With their junior high, we're probably maxed out, very similar to what Castleton is to say, are you ready to be able to put a program into this, call it a teen center and do some, do some other things? That is probably gonna be a little rougher. Doesn't mean you can't. I wouldn't say you'd have to slow down because you don't have the building, because there's enough other things that can be done. I think we have fields for whether those are, whether it's some soccer and those can be pickup soccer games or whatever here, or other things. You can do things outside and some inside stuff. Is that what you, I, I only have like the Boys and Girls Club and how after-school, there's the nap, there's after-school programs and probably tying them in as well is what, is that what you're?
I would say at the middle school and high school level.
Okay.
We, we have a great system, athletic system built up, so we really capture students that are interested in athletics. We have a really great arts built up too. We have art club, we have theater, we have several clubs at ranch school. What we're lacking is that, that third piece that does, I mean, I kind of think of it as like you're capturing these niches of each group and I think that's that third group who's not necessarily interested in playing sports, not really interested in theater, but they're still very active kids because around the community, they're riding bikes, they're getting involved, sometimes, you know, idle hands lead to these other issues. And that's where we, I mean, I think the key piece of this is building, like, if you had a teen center, that's great, but what you really need is to build mentorship within the teen center. Then it kind of becomes an issue those, like, you know, which came first. Like, I think you need the hub to gather, to build a mentorship, but can you build a mentorship without the hub? I think you can, it's just probably a tougher situation. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think everyone wants to feel needed, right? So, giving students a purpose of what they can do to really even give back to the community after-school and have positive role models in their lives and mentorship. So, I think it's more, more about that. For us, and it's something, we have between Poltonee and Fairhaven, a high number of students that are really struggling. And it's after-school hours, so.
I mean, we're open to anything because we see it too, I mean, Police Department sees it. So, we're not, we're open to anything. That's one of the things we're kind of happy about, about the rec committee. We're, I mean, their first, their first thing that they're gonna do is ball fields and stuff like that. So, that's not what you guys are dealing with, but it, there may be, there may be some cooperation there, someplace that will help. We'll, we'll help any way we can. One of the things we have done in the past, and I'm not promising anything, but it's, it's a simple thing for the town to do is pass through grants where we're the grantee, but we're just the pass-through. We're the ones that just push it through and, and we're the ones that say, yeah, we're, we'll, we'll pay attention to it. But it, I mean, I'm not promising you that, but it, it's, we've done that in the past for other things. So, that seems like the, the first thing we, that's pretty boiled, right? But it's not, I mean, as far as the other end of it, I don't know. We don't, we don't have a, we don't have a building. That's, that's gonna, that may be, that may be something else. There are people investigating that already to, to do something along those lines, so maybe there's room there to rent some space off those folks if they get, if they buy the building. But there's some people looking at that right now.
You had something you wanted to say?
My brother was helping to manage a community center out in Syracuse, New York, on the north side. They had the boxing, they had computer center. They, so, I mean, they had like an arts and crafts area. It encompassed so much, but we have one of the best dojos in the state in our, in our town. And I'm not, I'm not joking, when we go to tournaments in the state, we are recognized highly. We get awful lot of medals. Built into the training, as they get to the higher belts, they are encouraged to help teach the younger belts, where you then get your volunteering. I think that you should contact Karen. If Karen's not around, Isabel Corcel's the young lady to talk to. You guys know Isabel physically. But I think that might be a place to start for you guys. And from there, you know, not everybody wants a physical thing. Not all these kids want a physical thing. You might want to incorporate some of the music. Our music department needs a lot of work, needs a lot of help. This might be the opportunity. I'm just throwing some suggestions out there. As far as St. Mary's School, anybody who's involved with our latest sum of dollars knows there's a lot of issues with that building, really bad issues. So, I don't know, it's gonna take a lot of money. Also, just throwing it out there. I, it would be a great idea because they've got the gym, they've got the classrooms, everything.
Well, it's, it's a lot, as far, I mean, the men's club or the men's, or whatever it's called, the Poltonee, St. Raphael's, that place out back is essentially the same setup as St. Mary's, yeah. So, you know, those are, those are the obvious targets. But, I mean, what exactly do you need from us except, you know, positive thoughts and thoughts and prayers?
One thing that, that Jeff King had mentioned in Poltonee is, and you know, obviously it's a different situation, but worth kind of looking at is, he talked about matching funds. If we were to get a grant to be able to support hiring someone to do the organization, that might take a group of kids and connect them with the dojo or take a group of kids and connect them somewhere else. I think you need that main person and that's really where we're trying to focus the funding on that. I know, you know, just looking at it individually myself, seventy-five hundred dollars doesn't get you too far, but I can, you know, actually build that and, and you can actually get somebody that you can keep for a period of time. I think if you don't have enough to keep someone around, it's a little bit tougher. So, I think that piece would be helpful. I mean, we have a school, that's always one place where we could house some of these things. I, I do think there's some merit though to moving something outside of schools. We're looking for another place in the community, I think would be helpful, having a lot of kind of different thoughts and your background with the community at large and how you might be able to pull something like that off. So, I think those are the two main things that we'd be looking for.
Questions, anybody?
So, you're next. It sounds like you're here just to explain, hey, I got an idea, kind of figure, do I, is it, is it something you, we should be running with, do you support it? Sounds like I'm hearing, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. We, we support the concept. I need to, before, probably before, before jumping out committing monies or other resources or say, could be, get a little better look of what, absolutely. And then, are you looking for, like, when we, when Bob mentioned, we have a newly, the rec committee's had one meeting. So, we haven't, we don't have a functioning rec committee that, that's out there hitting it on all cylinders. I mean, I think they're gonna go through a bumpy storming period and we'll get there. They're a good group of people, but it's pretty early, so I don't want to, don't want to send you in that direction and have you go in and go, wow, wait, wait a minute here, because, but I do believe they, everyone sees the need. We'd probably be looking for you to, as you're fleshing this out a little bit, feel free to come on back. If there's a very specific ask, like, we have this grant and we need some, I like your pass-through idea for the grant, but also a partner. Do you need letters of support? Do you need anything else good? I, also, who do we have that has space that we could, when you start talking teen center? Boy, I looked downtown and I looked where we had the old theater and where they just put the sprinklers and everything in there. And if that owner, well, you notice I'm not putting any pressure on by throwing his name out or anything, but if, if talking to someone like that, because I've, what I've seen, they've been very good about saying, hey, look, I don't expect him to give it to us, but I, probably we'd partner. I think there's some possibility if, if you were looking for something.
And we've been having joint meetings between Fairhaven, folks in Fairhaven and Poltonee for, I don't know, it started in June, so we have another one coming up, so we, when is it, September?
Uh, sixth.
Second. So, we'd love to have, you know, some participation in, in that group too, where we're starting to talk about ideas and there's, you know, Jeff King from the Poltonee Select Board is there and so.
So, if you're looking, if you're looking for someone to say, hey, will someone willing to go and sit down and listen, you can sign me up.
Okay.
But also, I would, I would make sure, I think, to, I think the bigger vision of making it all work, because our kids go down and have fun in Poltonee and the Poltonee kids come up here and have fun from time to time too. Seems strange, but it, it happens. So, also, our, maybe some members, we get an invitation, some members of our current rec committee, they may want to talk, because I think as, besides, there's that group there, but I mean, there's, there's a whole lot that could morph out of that as well, that would help both the communities.
Is there a key white person in the?
Josh Merkey. Josh, Josh is the president. He was elected, but like Glenn said, they had their first meeting. So, their organizational process hasn't completed yet. They've got a, they've got a group and they're going at it at, at their own chosen speed. And we're not, the only thing we're pushing is, is our budget season starts here in another month. So, so, we're, we're telling them, get us the specifics, but you certainly can talk to Josh and he will probably kill me for mentioning that, but that's, I mean, you guys are a natural to get together. And one of the things I, I hope from the rec committee is that it's just not sport. It can't not, it can't be just sport, because there's a lot of kids that aren't, aren't involved in school. The first thing they're gonna do is, is focus on the fields to make them better than they are. That's fine, but when they get more mature, they're gonna want to see that there's, you know, there's elder stuff and there's, there's kids that aren't in sports and so that's where you guys probably are, come in naturally together. But Josh is the guy to talk to and just tell him we're here and Glenn will be at the meeting.
I'll be the focal point that'll tie back in. And the only other thing I'd offer out is, and I'm sure you're already doing it, you look for the, the key of probably is having someone where that's their focus and that means a full-time person, that, because we, everyone's got other, other jobs and it doesn't become the first thing. Yeah, anything we see at all, anyone sees with a grant opportunity to get that full-time person for a short period of time to help us get started, that would be amazing. I just.
Believe in somebody part-time that you could have developed a concept, because, yeah.
Everyone's got full-time jobs. I get it, I get it.
Yeah, kind of beyond just, you know, our work as, in the school district. But it's important because it also impacts the community and it impacts our day-to-day in the school.
Excellent, excellent. But it sounds like you've got the support, even though, you know, I know you're saying you can't spend that, but okay, yeah, good. Thank you for coming in.
You can, you can keep in contact with Joe and somehow we'll meld the rec committee and you guys, because it just seems like a natural. All right, thanks. All right. Emergency management discussion. I think that's where you come in. Sean?
All right. Well, Joe asked me to come in and talk to the board, maybe answer some questions. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Sean Dalvin. I retired from the Vermont Air Guard Fire Department as an operations chief. Past twenty years or so, I've been teaching incident command system courses for emergency management in Department of Homeland Security and I'm on the urban search and rescue team. And that's, the urban search and rescue team in Vermont is where I really became educated on how assets get moved around the state and around the country. The team does building collapse rescue, excuse me, high angle rescue, transport rescue, wide area searches and water rescue, swift water rescue. And like, we'll, we'll get activated to come to like a structure fire and shore up a building so investigators could get in, you know, make the building safe so they can do their investigation or if it's a fatality to shore it up to get bodies out, that kind of thing. But Vermont's part of what's called the EMAC system, excuse me, which is basically a mutual aid system throughout the country with other states. So, the team has gone with swift water assets to Texas, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, that type of thing. And all that starts at the local level and I guess that's where, where this discussion is there. Each town is supposed to have an emergency management plan and that plan is supposed to be registered with emergency management at the state level. That does a number of things for you. The first thing it does is, if we have a major event here and you don't have a plan, you may not get the same resources from FEMA that you would if you do have a plan. So, your checkbook is involved, you should have a plan. The other thing it does for you is it gives you a baseline. You can't, you're not gonna do, if a hurricane happens, we're doing these things. It's a very broad plan, because things change and you can't have a plan for everything. So, it's just a basic, basic broad, you know, mile-high view as to what you're gonna do, who's responsible for what. The other thing the plan does is it makes it so you don't waste money and resources. If you don't have a plan, say, you have a windstorm and you have trees down the crossroads of roads and you need bulldozers, you're gonna have it. And the select board gets together and goes, we're gonna order bulldozers to clear the road. And the fire chief didn't know you did that, he ordered bulldozers. And the town manager didn't know you did that and he ordered bulldozers. You're wasting assets, you're wasting time and money. It organizes things. So, the idea is that towns handle their own, own events. An emergency plan is to identify what potential problems you have and what assets you have to mitigate those problems. Off the top of my head, Fairhaven has Rebo tracks. You have potential for mass casualty with the Amtrak going through, you have hazardous materials, you have hazardous materials that go near water, you have 22A, you have Route 4, you have a farm. The farm, you know, if something happens there, it needs to be taken care of. You have a water treatment plant, you've got two schools. So, all, every, think of, everything that could possibly go wrong and try to have a baseline plan as to who's gonna do what. And that gets registered with the state. So, the emergency operation center at the state is how assets get distributed. If there's an event that happens in, in Fairhaven and it's beyond the assets that you have, you call the emergency operation center and they can get you assets and they know what assets are around because people submitted their emergency response plans. See how it's, goes together. The emergency operation center is about 12 seats. It's a big room. Each seat has a computer, phones, radios, and each seat is a different discipline and they have their resources. So, I sat in it before for the urban search and rescue team. And there's a seat for agency of transportation, there's law enforcement, there's EMS, there's Red Cross, anything you can think of. So, I'm sitting, if I'm sitting up there for the USAR team and Fairhaven has a water rescue down here on River Street and you get a report of somebody's, three people standing on their porch, on the roof of their porch, first floor is flooded, water's rising, you don't have a boat, so he calls the emergency operation center or calls dispatch and they call. And there's call takers up there and it goes on the computer, says, hey, we need this. Then also in this room are big screens, so there's like a, a big screen that shows what is being asked for and what the status of that is. There's a screen that has the weather, there's one that has news channels on. It's, it's like right out of the, right off of a movie, you know? But, so, I opened up my little book and I have a map of Vermont and I have a little dot where all the water rescue teams are. And I go, closest one is Rutland. And I contact Rutland, hey, you need to go to Fairhaven and do a rescue. And then I put it in the computer, goes up on the screen. Fairhaven called, water rescue, three persons, Rutland Fire Dispatch, they're responding. And then when they do it, it goes up on the board that it's, that it's done. Obviously, there's not people sitting in those chairs 24/7, but there is a duty officer. So, that duty officer has the phone and he has the ability to activate and mobilize the entire EOC or a limited response. Castleton, Gilmore's home center burned out. The fire marshal's office was called and they go to investigate. They show up and there's paint and paint thinner and stuff running out with the firewater into the road. That's a hazardous material. They didn't activate the entire emergency operation center, but they activated the hazard state hazmat team. Say hazmat team was dispatched. So, you can do a piecemeal, get what you need resource, or it could be a widespread, big event and y'all come and, and the whole center's staffed. So, that, that's how you get resources. Very important. You, you, those of you who know me know I preach the incident command system. I'm like, I'm a big ICS guy. It's really important to use the forms and they're not hard, especially, there's one call to 214, it's a log. Because, say, at the end of this event, FEMA goes, shows up with their checkbook and they go, what'd you do? We're gonna pay you for what you did. If you didn't write it down, it didn't happen. Okay, so, say, say the chief activated the entire department and he had somebody at Shelter as security and he had people doing, knocking on doors, looking for people. And then after that, they were sent to traffic control. You gotta keep a log, that these dates and times, these guys did this, because if you don't, you're not gonna get paid. So, it's really important to keep good records. I don't know, any questions I can answer for you or?
Howard, you obviously have seen our emergency plan.
A long time ago. I haven't looked at it recently at all.
Victor?
I've been so long to it, I can, it's.
Oh, I don't know what, what the emergency management does once they get it and approve it. If they put it online.
I, I think that's where I think I saw.
They have, you probably, you would have access to it from, from USAR, I'm sure.
Yeah.
EOC has it.
Right, right.
We're all approved.
Yeah.
And so, so we have the basics.
Just to, to, to key into what Sean was saying, just as an example, for the last, what, six weeks now, since the EOC was activated, I've been getting daily situation reports. There's daily briefings. I've sat in on a couple of them, but wasn't really applicable because we didn't really have the situation and other places in the state do. But to see what the flow is and each seat at the, at the EOC, every department represented has a section in that situation report and gives their daily update of what's going on in their particular section.
There's a manager, an EOC manager, and they, they go, we're going to give a situation report at 1800 hours. And then when you're done, they go, next report's going to be at this time. And they go around the room, they go, AOT, do you have anything? EMS, you have anything? And they, anybody who has input. And you can attend them or they put them on Zoom meetings.
Yeah. And you, and they also will send them out, the, the slides from the meeting. Always starts out with a weather report and what your forecast is. And then they go right down the line from every department, what their status is. When all the, when EMAC activated, swift water teams from Michigan, from North Carolina, that all gets posted up. New Hampshire, they had a hazmat team from New Hampshire that came in to augment Vermont's to deal with, with spills from the, from the flooding.
People, a lot of the flooding, the, the fuel tanks in your houses, the, a lot of propane tanks go floating down the river. We did a rescue on a 500 pound propane tank floated off the Elston Bennett. And it's, we, we were working with a team from Connecticut. I saw a team from Michigan, a swift water team, North Carolina, and they're all part of that EMAC, which is the, the national, the mutual aid system.
So basics for us, if, if we have a flood, we're in deep trouble. But we have.
If we have a flood, we're in deep trouble because we don't flood. We know how we flood. Because we've got pictures of 27, we've got pictures of 73, we've got pictures of Irene, and they're pretty much identical.
So let's, you know, it doesn't matter what, what the emergency is. Now, do we call, do you call in as, as a director? Do you call in to, to the center? Or do they call and check?
No. What happens is they use the planning commission as liaisons. And so when a wind event, a flood event, or a, a high water event, or you know, a stream rainfall, I will get a call from Maggie O'Brien at RRPC, who is the emergency management planner now. She took Steph Born's place. And she will call or email, usually both, and say, if you have no impact, reply, no impact. If you have impact, there are questions that you ask. That information all goes up to the EOC. So they can start to get a picture of what they've got, where. And then from there, your individual requests go up, they go through the watch commander, the, the watch commander, or directly the EOC if it's been activated, and they can start assigning assets. With a, with a flood event or something that is, has some preparatory tying to it, they'll preposition assets. They have swift water teams in Manchester, in Springfield, Rutland has one in-house, Hartford, and other places up north, preposition when they knew that flood event was coming down.
They did that. The team I was on, well, we slept in the fire station in Manchester. And then they deployed us to London area. And then they sent us to Bristol and Montpelier.
The amount of things that go on that most people aren't even aware of is amazing. And good people in good places and the coordination between agencies is extremely good. Gilmore's Fire was a perfect example. Because we had hazmat team in there, we had the investigators in there. And there's places, I know, did USAR end up on that one to shore up?
No.
But there's, there's places where they have.
No, USAR came to Scott.
USAR, USAR was in Scottsdale.
Double fatal.
Right.
I went to Benson Store Fire. We shored that building up.
Yeah. And this is stuff the average person doesn't know about, but it happens.
It's the same thing when we did when COVID was high. And I see, there's a new report came out on, on COVID just recently, this week. But when pandemic was high, they were monitoring shortages of bread, shortages of milk, shortages of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
We were getting daily reports like, there's shortages of this, 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 this is the areas that are high.
And that was another event that the EOC was in partial activation. It mostly, it was all by Zoom, of course. But commodities were being tracked, bed space in hospitals and overflow bed space was being tracked, shelter space being tracked, supplies being tracked. And again, and just the cash and supplies that's available that people don't even know about.
What they did during COVID is they didn't staff the EOC at that location. I actually staffed a physician from my house. Because the different seats, they didn't want everybody in the same room.
Yeah.
Plus, they built the EOC in the same building that flooded during Irene. So they evacuated it this time.
Yeah. Irene was great because they had to evacuate EOC in the middle of it.
Some towns developed their own local EOC to, to manage their emergency response plan. And then when it goes beyond the assets of what you have planned for, then you can call the state. And then the state calls other states, activates the EMAC process. It could be a federal disaster. Like, there were some federal FEMA teams that came in to Vermont this past month because of the flood.
Yeah. There's over 400 FEMA people working in Vermont.
It expanded to, to that level. But the, some, the plans, there's, there's a format, but Fairhaven's may be more in-depth than Castleton's. Castleton's may be more, it's, there's a wide range of how in-depth they get. And, you know, some of them basically are checklists. You, you pull a tab, a wind event, think about these things. You know, a snowstorm, think about these things.
Right.
You know, whether it be, go run your generators to make sure they're working. Make sure all the emergency vehicles are fueled up. Put a fire truck at the ambulance and put an ambulance in the fire station, you know, to move assets around. So, you know, one, one thing doesn't get, albeit on one, like asset. That, that type of thing.
Anybody else got questions? Appreciate it. I, I would love for us to get to the point where we're at that, that checklist with actual, you know, how, what's going to happen here, what's going to happen there. I know that's, that's down the road a little bit. But I mean, we have a, having read the, because I started this discussion a while ago, I did, I didn't read the, the emergency management plan. So, but it's, it would be nice to find out a little bit. But it's nice to know what we got. Appreciate it.
You better have a chance to look at it because you're not really in that loop. But the school districts, okay, both the high school and the grade school have comprehensive plans because they're, have plans for what their staff is going to, because they've got a bigger staff.
Right.
And their idea is, okay, in this type of an event, what are we going to do? But in order to have continuity, they try to do as many, as much things the same as possible to have less things that to deal with.
Yeah. And it, it seems like that's where you guys would be, would be coordinating with them.
The, the, everything is so situation-specific that you have to have an intentionally broad plan to say, okay, this is, this is what we've got to play with. Now, how do we, how do we distribute these assets and put them where they're needed? And if necessary, where do we go to bring in additional ones? At both the local level, the regional level, and the state level.
The nice thing about law enforcement is, like I was saying, you need to keep a log. They have the ability to do that in place on a daily basis with the radio logs. You know, so that could be used. But like the highway department, for instance, if you send them out to do certain jobs, if you don't document it and log it, you're not going to get a check for it. We have the ability to do it ourselves in the car. So we're on the scene and officer shows up. I can go, I can go to whoever's badge number it is and put them on duty and assign them to this. So when you run it, and it keeps, if you're in an incident, it'll generate in that incident. It'll show everything.
Cool.
And one thing that Sean mentioned with the, with the incident management system is it's modular. So you use what you need for a particular incident and don't use what you don't. But you end up by using it and being familiar with things on small events, it becomes much more natural to do it in big events. And at least if everybody is trained in the same standard, which we all are, then you can cross-communicate with somebody else and they know, you know what you're talking about. But you've got to break things up and amend them when you're at it. So that's what the EMS does for you.
Thank you.
Good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in and sharing that with us, John.
Amendments to the agenda.
I don't know if this is, this is something that we should do in executive session or not. But I wanted to discuss the downtown sidewalk project and.
So far not.
We didn't warn it.
Well, no, we can, we can discuss it. And you can take, pick it up at Board Roundtable, if you want.
Okay, I'll do that.
It's not, it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound like it's executive session. If it, if it looks like it is, we'll go into it.
No, that's fine.
And my, my point was that if we're going to have any kind of discussion more than a couple of minutes of FYI, we should put it on the agenda so people who want to know what's going on.
Fair enough.
Can be here. And if it's not on the agenda, we can't put on the last, we do too much last-minute adjustment of our agenda, in my opinion.
I don't believe that's true. I don't believe that's true either.
I, I see. This is the one meeting I, that we haven't adjusted. People have a right to know. That's why they have.
Yeah, I, I get, I get that. I get that.
The problem is, Len, I think that the agenda is set for us and we really don't have a lot of, of input as to what the agenda will be until after it's been published. So, you know?
Then, yeah, we can, we can get into a discussion if you want to be in the, putting the agenda together. Get into, you can do that.
Well, I don't see.
But I, our people have a right to know whether they're, we're trying to talk about something that they want to come and sit in the audience for. That's the reason you have a printed agenda. That's the only point I'm making. I just think we do too much adjusting on the fly. You shouldn't.
Well, for, for good news for you, there's no amendments.
That's, that's what I mean. I feel very good tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're strong today.
Okay, approval of minutes of August 8.
I'm going to move that we amend the minutes. There's one entry I noticed. I don't know if anyone else did.
Hold on. If you want to accept it and then with.
Okay.
Motion second and then.
I have a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion to be approved.
Okay, another second. You want a second?
I'll second. And now we'll get the.
Okay. And I'm going to move to amend. If you look at the minutes, it indicates that Chad Vizier was absent from the meeting. He did attend the meeting later on about, about a, a little more than half, halfway through. So he was there. So I move that we amend this to show that Chad did attend, but, or if you want to put some.
It says member is absent.
On page three, Mr. Vizier arrived at 7:45.
Page three.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that that's a little, I, I.
But I'm, I'm, I'm with you on, we'll, we'll put it up here and.
Right. Put it up. Just move it up front.
Okay. We'll just move it here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay with that change? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Five minutes for public comment. Smiley, you're on.
Thinking about what Glenn said about the having things on the agenda. How far in advance do you need to, I mean, I have something that I wanted to discuss. But it wouldn't be very fair if anybody else wanted to be here.
Well, usually, when do you publish those? Thursday before or so?
Yeah, the Thursday before, Thursday near close of business.
Yeah. So anytime before.
Okay.
An meeting and just call Joe and ask to be put on the agenda. That's, it's that simple.
Okay. Maybe I'll push off.
I don't mean to put a wet blanket on. If you have, five minutes for comment, you might say, hey, look, I've got an issue with this X, Y, and Z. Then we might, we would probably say, this is something that we would want to warn on, on the agenda. But it's okay to.
Okay.
Take a few minutes and say, hey, I'm thinking about this.
I think that's what five minutes of public comment.
That's what it's meant for. That's what it's meant for.
And I usually have taken advantage of that. But when he was saying that it was making a wheel or two turn. So I wanted to ask, I think that the DPW has done a very nice job with the crosswalks. I know they've got a lot left to do, but they've made, enrode on that. I'm very happy that they put new, repainted the parking lines downtown. But my comment is regarding them doing the parking lines. It really, really infringed on the businesses. Perfect example is the Wooden Soldier. She closes at 2 o'clock, yet they closed up all the parking down in that area from first thing in the morning. She lost an entire day, almost an entire day's profit because there was no parking. Nobody was going to, and there was no forewarning. None of the merchants had any kind of notification that it was going to be done and how it was going to be done. So she didn't know ahead of time that, well, I'm not going to have any customers today, so I might as well be shut down. So I don't have to pay the people that I, that came in to work who didn't because there was nobody here. I, I, you people keep saying, this is a business-friendly town. We want more business. Business, business, business. But yet you turn around and you do stuff like this to the people who are there.
I don't think it's purpose, you, you make it sound like it's purposeful.
No, and I know. I think that people are thinking through.
The mistake, the mistake was not forewarning everybody. And I agree.
The mistake is not forewarning people. The mistake is also, why couldn't it have been done after regular business hours from 5 o'clock on?
Because that's overtime for our guys.
The merchants who were losing all their money because people couldn't park to go into.
So then the taxes get higher. I mean, I, come on. There's going to be, there's going to be inconveniences occasionally and with public works. It just is. And obviously they, there might have been some flexibility, that's for sure. And, and there certainly should have been some warning that we're going to be in here that day. So they could have told their regular customers, park across the street or something like that. That's true.
Well, if you look at Wooden Soldier, if you look at our, our business, we have a lot of very elderly people that need, they need to be close to where they're going if they're going to go to their business. And to expect these people to park over in the free parking area to go to the Wooden Soldier or, you know.
I mean, it's a one day. It's, it's one day.
How much do you think that one day cost Patty?
I understand that. But it, it shouldn't have cost.
And quite frankly, if they had just waited until 2 o'clock when she closed, it would have made a big difference. It was very poor planning and I think it needs to be addressed.
I agree that they should, they should, absolutely should have let them know. And maybe some sort of compromise could have come up with. That's very true. That part's true. But there will always be those kind of.
I think, I think, I think the thing to do would be to, you know, make them aware of it. But maybe they could do a, a little section each day. So, so you're not bogging up as many parking spots at a time.
Right.
And it seems like it was only for a partial day. And it seems like it was only for a partial day.
It was two days.
That's what we did.
Two, two separate...
We did some here, went down further, did some here, went down.
They did, they did parts of it, but like they did the whole section on the bottom of the L, I guess you, I, I don't know how I explained it, where the, the Ruby's is now. They had that whole section and around the corner, and coming through around the corner. So the closest parking places that our clients had was almost up to the laundromat. I'm, I'm just saying, the organization needs to be better. The, working with the businesses needs to be better. Coordinating.
I take a lot of offense to that, because I work very closely with our businesses, to the, to the point where we get them money. I walk up and down the street promoting our businesses. I take, I take offense to say we need to do better working with our businesses.
And I also know that there, you tend to gravitate more towards certain businesses than others.
Can I just make a comment that the reason, the reason this is five minutes for comment is not to try to defend our side, is to listen to what was said. What I hear you saying is, hey, we, we could do better with, with the painting. Before we get into, which is 15, 20 minutes of conversation, again, I would, I would say, that belongs on agenda items, so business owners like, like the ones who own, so that we're not just taking and shooting the messenger, if there's a, if...
I'm, I'm, I'm going to defend people when I have the need.
I'm, I'm just saying that we would, I think, just disagreeing and trying to beat down someone who comes in, is not the right answer, Bob. That's not what we should be doing.
Right, and I also don't, I mean, I'm concerned about the fact that this comes across sometimes a little bit dismissive. I mean, I recognize you may not find the problem to be a problem, or you disagree, but like Glenn said, we're here to listen. And, you know, again, I think that it's, it's probably wasted effort if we're going to sit here going into an elaborate defense. If it's, we disagree with something, we can say we disagree, or that's it, and not go into, you know, we don't, we shouldn't be in a position where we have to defend each other, I think that we all know.
I think we can work it out with the guys.
Oh, I'm sure we can.
I can do maybe a smaller set.
We all know, we all know how to handle things, so that's, that's how we should do it.
I want to be the first one to say I am very proud of our DPW. I think we have one of the best DPWs around. I've lived in Polley, I've worked in Rutland. I never have to worry, and with all the hills we have here in Fairhaven, in the winter I have never had to, I take that back, once or twice, but still, I don't have to worry about driving in Fairhaven, usually. And I, I give our DPW a lot of credit. All I'm saying is, there needs to be better organization between the town and the town. The merchants, the people in the town and the town coordinating, so as not to have somebody lose all their profits for a day. That's all I'm saying.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other person's five minutes? Doesn't look like there's other folks, okay. Department head reports, chief.
Just a quick, I did put a report in your box, we had three arrests in the last week, one for simple fault. One individual for history aggravated assault kidnapping, I'm off on mischief, NCIC, threw 39 traffic tickets, 15 written warrants, we had any partner violations in two classes, 18 civilian endangerment. And I did a quick report of the basic activity, there wasn't really any huge highlights. We're still moving along with the missing persons investigation, working hand in hand with the Department of Homeland Security on that incident. As far as trying to move forward with the constables, I talked to both constables separately, as with Sean Gouding retiring from the police department side, he's going to maintain his constable. He's going to revert back to using the constables, I mean, they have different call numbers than we do. What we're finding is that the, the way it is now, when a constable, first of all, constables aren't, they don't have an ORI. So if Don or Sean makes a criminal arrest, what Paul just learned, because they don't have an ORI, they arrested a girl twice, sent the case to the state attorney's office, they say, sorry, courts won't take, because you don't have access to criminal histories. Pretty much the cases are dead in the water. So what we're going to do to solve the problem with, with the Fairhaven if it comes to that is, we will become the records holders for them. If they need a criminal history, we would run the criminal history here and supply it directly to the state attorney's office, because as a constable, they're not entitled to have that, because they don't have an ORI, that makes sense, it's an NCIC number. If it doesn't, Sean can get it, if he's working for me, he can't get it if he's working for the town as a constable. So that issue, we're going to, I talked to NCIC, we're going to do a record holder agreement and solve that problem. What I also learned was, constables, any, any agency throughout the state, constables, sheriffs, law enforcement, state police, you have to report your race data, your why you stopped, if you searched cars, there's a whole bunch of new data they have to report With Sean, I'm going to primarily switch over to constables. Don and Sean would have to manually keep track of that and send it at the end of the year. If they don't do that, they're not eligible to turn the academy. That's the, they have to submit that type of information. What I learned this week is, the new crime reporting system, Valcor, allows our agency to be a sponsor agency for them. That will allow them to access spillman, it'll show up as a Fairhaven Police Department case number, but if they stop a traffic, a traffic stop, they, they will both have the ability to come into our office, start a case, it will show under their call number, M37M3A. So at the end of the month, we could run a report, those two officers did this, but their data at the end of the year will be automatically sent to solve that problem. When I talked to the, the chair of the governing board, he agreed with me that it would give us a much better picture of overall activity of law enforcement in the town. So when you get a report that says we had 2,000 incidents, if they had 10, we'd have 2,010, you know, so it would show as a whole. Their cases would be reviewed and then cleared that way. So I think we're, we're trying to bring them together. If one of them gets defeated or chooses to retire and not run for reelection, any new constable could gain access to that, once they were certified, once they've been trained, once they've been, as any other police officer here. So I think Sean and, and Don are both for it. I think it's a good positive move to kind of maybe put our reporting system together and solve the problem. So that's kind of where we're headed. I sent the letter up today. The other thing is the officer involved shooting, the case is completed and it was sent to the attorney general and the state attorney's office for review on August 8. I've not heard anything, I don't know how long that'll take. The Burlington was a year later, so I don't know if it will be quickly or it'll be dragged, but it is no longer in the state police's hands, it's been sent to them for review. So I'm hoping that'd be nice to get some conclusion faster than, we are a little short staff right now, Dale had surgery on his finger from the incident with the offender in the car, he had torn a ligament, so he's been out for, he came back, he was out a couple days. He's not been taken out of work any longer, but they've told him to protect the, he's got a cast on the one finger for the tube, so he, and he's on vacation. So if you're down the tube right now, I'm trying to keep up. I think we're doing okay, but we're trying, so if there's a little lag in time response, it's just because we're hurting for that one. I think that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions or any issues or problems?
Questions for the chief?
Yeah, chief, I was wanting to know, I mean, and again, I don't know the structure of this, do you know if the state police reached any conclusion or recommendation or is that simply not announced?
No, and I haven't even, so I, once they're done, I have to do an internal to see if he, the internal investigation, did he, did he follow policy? But I'm not providing video statements, and they said I will get that at some point and I will see everything. No, there's been no indication either way where it's going.
Thank you.
And I, I only have one, one person calling me about saying that they thought the speed was picking up on West Street again, and now with your explanation that you're a little short added and everything, but it seems like that's starting to get a little more speed.
We got to went to lot Fourth Street too. I didn't know when, when the school don't, don't affect, is that in effect now? I know signs are...
It's, it's in effect, but the signs, we, we still have a few weeks of getting, a couple...
He's going to try to get that done as soon as possible.
As soon as pavement marking was done, I think. I don't know if the signs are here yet either.
We got the 25 mile an hour sign, but the other, the other small sign that goes underneath it to give the timing from 7:30 to 8:30 and then, what is it, 2:30? That's what we're waiting for.
That sign isn't in yet.
Yeah, so the producer said, could be three weeks, so.
Hopefully those signs get up and we, and that, right, I heard a little about the speed on Fourth Street too.
Yeah, Fourth and West and obviously South is all popular at the moment.
I've had one complaint about a dirt bike speeding in the area of Union and Elm, going crazy, but that's all I've heard.
And then we did have a complaint at ATVs on Town Highway 63. I've been trying to address that, but the person living there has two active warrants and runs on us every time there'll be food on foot or, and he knows that he's wanted. And there's only one way in and out of there, so if you drive up, they might come and run up to that door. So we were actively trying, he knows we're trying to arrest them, I told him. That'll solve the problem.
Can you guys hear any complaints? Because I know, I've heard a lot of them about the crosswalks downtown, particularly the ones by the, by Cloud 9, that goes across the park. People are not slowing down. People are not stopping. Of course, they're usually coming past our door spouting off about it, so I'm hearing a lot about it. Just making it aware, making you guys aware, it's really bad over there.
I do think the signs help, but they got run over and destroyed, so...
I ain't saying anything about that, all I'm saying is...
What I'm trying to say is, when the sign was there, it funneled everybody in, but at some point over the last year, we've had three got damaged, so there's only two out now which are on Washington Street. The two downtown got clobbered and they're in pieces. I was going to try to have a hired crew maybe like make one out of what's left, maybe put one back up in that area, because I do think, I do think it helps.
I do too.
And maybe at some point with the, the traffic calming measures that you guys are looking at with the grants, that may calm that situation down a little bit.
Hopefully. Questions?
Could we put like one of those big orange barrels there for now? I mean, just something.
I don't know, it seems like that's a lot, I don't know, what, what are you guys saying?
Or a few, a few cones, something to catch people's...
Yeah, we have put a cone, we've put cones there before, but I mean, sometimes they disappear in the line.
Really?
Whoever's, whoever's using the signs, it seems intentional. At least from where I sit, it seems like they're intentionally smashing them.
I'm sure it's just kids screwing around with a $400 car.
I know you said you were waiting.
A big truck that's going through.
You were waiting on the new signs? Any idea when those are supposed to show up?
Three weeks. Three weeks for signs on for Fourth Street.
No, 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 the new, for the crosswalks.
We, we got those on...
Yeah, those were installed and gone.
I got them off Highway Safety, they were approved, that's an equipment item we could buy for participating in Highway Safety grants. So we had purchased six of them, and right now they're not a budgeted item.
Right. All I know is, I mean, it's dangerous on that corner.
I'll take a look and see if there's a way I can come up with an idea to resurrect a couple of those. I'll look at them.
How much do those cost?
They're three to four hundred dollars. But you're going to have to figure every year, it's going to cost you three, $400 because you get about a year out. I think we made into the second year. And that really is tight there, so I don't know, maybe a big truck hook it out, trying to get through there, but that one definitely helped slow traffic. It was an eye grabber, and the problem down there is, the other one is really long and it's not, you know, even, at one point I thought it'd be a foot, I've seen it, I was in Maine, and a couple towns have flashing lights that, that come off.
Your janitor's got a couple of those.
Push button, the light comes up and people walk, and he says, I catch if there's somebody in the crosswalk.
Well, the thing about that, the one that's closer to Dunkin' Donuts there, at least you can see people, for the most part, standing there waiting to cross. But at the one on the corner by Cloud 9, because of the way, the parking is, people can't, in the cars can't always see...
That's correct.
Somebody waiting.
I've seen that, and it happened to me.
You, you actually have to be standing almost on the travel lane for people to see you.
People should, should maybe step out a little farther so that they...
That's what the bump out is for.
And that's not happening, a lot of them are staying back, and I've noticed that people don't pay attention, people are focused on driving, and they don't see here or there a lot of times. So that, that does, I understand why that's happening.
Yeah, I mean, I have a, there's a crosswalk on mine in front of my house on North Main, and I've been in the crosswalk walking the dog, and someone will just come right in the lane next, we just go right through it, so.
That was the last sign that got destroyed.
Yeah, it was like against my fence for a week.
I'm just throwing it out there, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's...
If you guys don't hear it, you're not going to be able to do anything about it, so that's why I...
These are great.
That's why we're here.
And that's why we went, Roseanne, to buy those signs last year and to try them and see how they work, because we know the crosswalks are a problem. One is too small, visibility, and one is too big for visibility, especially down Main Street, it just, yeah. How do we get that perpetuated? If that's, it was a trial, let's try it, see how it works, and then maybe at some point, if we get some more grant money or we get time, maybe we'll do the flashing lights, maybe we'll do something to try to address that we know, and we try to enforce it, it's just, again, like, it can't be everywhere.
Do you know if the traffic on the crosswalks on Washington Street, is it near the number of traffic on the ones right downtown? Is it possible to maybe take one off of Washington Street and put it on one of that...
I'm sure any of that decision can be made, I don't have the data on how many people cross, you know, but...
Just observation, I didn't know if maybe you had.
You haven't yet.
Okay.
Not a bad idea. Any other questions for the chief?
No.
Water department's here.
Actually, I do have a few things first. It's come to my attention that we have an issue with a certain business using a lot of water, that I've been asked to check with the manufacturer of meters, which I have done numerous times for numerous complaints. I got a reply before I got here. Every meter is made to AWWA certification, which is American Water Works Association. They are guaranteed. When we first put them in five years ago, a lot of people complained because these are flow meters, they're not, or they're a tube meter, they're not a mechanical disc turner, so they can't slow down, it's reading whatever goes through the meter. If the town and/or the person feels that it is not, it can be replaced and tested at their expense. The first five, as you guys know, or some of you guys know, came back 100% accurate. These are, if there's an issue, going to be 100% accurate. Tom and myself started saying it when we agreed, you know, get these meters, I reiterated it with Joe a couple years ago, we're not water police. Once it goes through that meter, as a town, as a water department, it's not our problem where it goes, I can't tell you where it goes. I can tell you what goes through it, but I can't tell you where it goes after that. it's not our problem where it goes. I can't tell you where it goes. I can tell you what goes through it, but I can't tell you where it goes after that fact. I was also told that, I lean, had called Cam's Truck. And Scott, who was the district supervisor manager for Cam's Truck, like East Coast. Right now he's down in, uh, North Carolina. Wanted to know if this is that serious where he should come up here. I said, right now I think it's just a discussion, but I wanted to put that to rest here and now in front of the board. We are not having any problems with meters. This is one of the big meters. It's a two inch meter. When we've replaced the four inch at the, um, longer mat and a couple of the other bigger meters. Of course, we've taken them out. We've scrapped them. There are stones in there and some of those like that. So naturally they're gonna be swell. These are not. So it might go from seven hundred gallons a week, cause we unofficially read them every week, to a thousand gallons or fifteen hundred gallons or whatever. It's just because they're new accurate meters. Second, oh, I was gonna say, anybody have any questions on that?
I was, I was gonna ask, I'm sorry. I did not, I don't know if I quite understood. The, the business, the problem with the business, are they, is that business claiming that we, that there's, they're paying for too much water or?
For that part, I don't know yet.
Okay.
Come to my attention from some of the employees at the town office, uh, it has jumped way up. Which I can't answer why it went way up except they've got more water. But it is also a business that might be using more during the summer.
Did, uh, you, you guys usually notify when that happens, right?
Yes. Um, we get, and all, every meter is programmed with alerts for excessive use, you know, if it goes over. If all of a sudden, like if they freeze and all of a sudden the pipe just goes berserk and goes through them, it comes up as a burst. If there's a leak, like a continuous flow for X amount of hours, it'll come up as a leak. Um, if somebody like takes it out, it goes dry. Um, so there's a lot of built-in safeties as far as the homeowners go and the town goes. I just, I guess it just kinda rubbed me the wrong way that we're going through this five years later still.
Yeah. It's, people get shocked sometimes. I mean, you know.
I know. But, you know, like I said, we're not water police. I can't tell people, well, you can't use that much water or whatever. I mean, they're, they're within their allotment and they're, they're paying the bill and they're using it. I can't.
Is there, have we gotten a complaint from, from that business yet?
Uh, no, but I think bills just went out recently. It, it was, it was a dramatic increase.
Yeah. But we, we talked to them after we saw the, the spike, right? That was, that's usually what happens.
Uh, we wanted to get some information before we reached directly out. Yeah.
I just wanna comment that I think it's really cool that our people here in the office caught it, caught that there is a spike. They were paying attention.
They do.
And took the initiative to go after it and figure out what was going on. Before it was brought, you know, before this, you know, came in racking and raiding. I think, I'm really impressed that they, you're, at the proactivity. So I just wanted to.
The new meters allow for that too. That's one of the things, because they go around town.
Oh, I see them. I see them.
I was gonna say, every, every week, like I said, I did it today.
Yeah, I know.
But no, I just, I commend the town, the office. Oh my God. I can't think of, I, yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I give them a lot of credit.
And, and as long as you've mentioned the one, as you were saying, Joe, the water bills just came out. Understand that our water and sewer rates went, went up a little bit this year too. And this, for some reason or other, it seems like summer, if you're gonna get your highest water bill, happens on the one you just got. So, uh, just, I, you know, I'm, I'm no different than anyone else. I like to compare. Did you get your water bill? What'd you, what, what did you, what did you pay it here? Well, understand it was gonna go up some because our water and sewer rates went up a little bit. But also this is the period of time where whether you're filling the small kiddie pool, pressure washing the house, for some reason or other, this is the time you usually, what you use goes up a little bit. That's all. Yeah.
Second thing is, and I was off yesterday. Somebody called Jeff, I guess, about using a hydrant to flush out the sewer at the construction at Dunkin' Donuts.
First I heard about it.
Okay. Um, we need to get together because they cannot do that. First of all, the town charges and we have to, you know, know who's using it for how long. Second of all, it has to have a backflow on it. Because all you guys know how construction companies are. It's been in the swamp. It's been in the concrete. Soon as they shut, start slowing down the hydrant and anything seeps back in there, we're gonna have a lot of issues. So, um, I didn't realize you weren't aware of it.
No, no. Thanks for giving a heads up.
Um, we just, we can't allow that. We can't do it. If anybody calls you. I know in the past, I think it was last year or the year before, when they were doing the paving up here on four A, pipe used the one on by the park there. But that was set up, I think, well, Curver did it, but it had a, a backflow preventer and a meter on it. So we know that it may be something the town should look into that we designate a hydrant to get water from and hook this up before anybody uses it.
I think you shot one or did have one all set up. Why couldn't have it be put up there for a day or whatever they needed?
Exactly. I mean.
You just, you just need, you just need to be aware of it.
Yeah. You get, you get the meter. You can buy the backflow preventer. You know, it's gonna be sixty, seventy pounds. It's gonna be about that long, but we can hook it up before anybody connects a hose to it. Which is how it should be done from here into the future.
Did they use the hy, they didn't use the hydrant?
I don't know. Jeff didn't know. They just called them. He didn't know. I don't know if Nate was called or not.
Check it out.
As far as everything else goes, um, the plant's running very good. With all the rainwater and everything, it's kept everything kind of stirred up. So there's been no like layer of silt or anything like that. So water's been fairly clean, not a lot of stuff. Chemicals having to be added and stuff. So everything's going good. Our roof stopped leaking. The Jeff, the Jeff, the Jeff and Mike roof repair work.
I just figured it'd stop raining today.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, but no, everything's going good. Um, we're working still on the electrical, which is coming close to on our part being finished. And then it's just about to get to company to hook everything up. Everything's kinda coming together. Hopefully by the end of the year, everything that we've been in the works with for a couple of years will be done.
Questions?
Are you still looking for an intern up there? We still need one?
Need one? No, but if anybody is interested, certainly.
Just wanted to get that out there.
What's it pay? I might do it.
For you.
Yeah. You could work with Mike and Jeff.
I mean, it's not like, it's not like another employee we have to have, but if anybody's interested, interested, certainly.
We've got some good success up there. I know the one young lady was, she, she hung out with you guys for a while and she ended up getting a job.
Yeah. Auditionally, yeah. Engineering. And of course Ryan, the first one he got, was hired in, uh, Public Works in Polley.
Right.
We have been doing pretty good up there. As far as our interns.
Okay. Uh, not a ton. It's, it's been mostly the, uh, the auditor show these last couple, um, couple of weeks, just grinding through paperwork. Uh, I do wanna start with a fundraiser that's gonna go on September ninth over at, over at the park at the gazebo um, for Kerry Bogart. I don't know if you know these folks, but they were in, they were in a pretty bad accident. So Diane Davely, she's gonna be doing some, some nail trimming on dogs and doing just a little bit of grooming as a way to generate some, some uh, money for that family. So September ninth, I think she said it starts at ten. So if you would like to get your dog's nails trimmed, that'd be a spot.
She's charging ten bucks. She's donated an hour.
The folks that do have that.
Yep. Oh, doo doo. It's today, the twenty-second. We meet with FEMA tomorrow. To Sean's point, we meet with FEMA tomorrow to talk about um, any flood damage we had, which was very minor. Scotch Hill, Town Highway sixty-nine. Um, the wastewater plant, they experienced high flows, which mean they had to use more, uh, more labor, more man-hours and then more chemicals. So FEMA's also gonna pick up the tab for some of that. We'll get done tomorrow. The auditor, still working on the auditor stuff. It's, uh, bless Jenny. She did it all to, all by herself. Uh, Liz and I are, are churning through the paperwork, getting this stuff to our auditor for the fiscal year twenty-three audit, uh, which is the year that just passed. Um, and I got the signed contract for the park lights and the park and ride. So that's going, that's moving forward very, very slowly. But forward progress is forward progress.
Did you say you have the signed contract?
I have the signed contract. And honestly, that's all I have. It's been just a lot of paperwork lately. Questions?
How's this, uh, town project, is that winding up pretty much?
They, they told me the end of this month, um, that, uh, they're not gonna, they're not gonna hit the end of this month.
They told you that two years ago.
Yeah.
I just wonder if.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I can, I feel pretty confident by saying the end of October it'll be completed.
Yeah, I just, I just saw on the grid, the patching and the tiles and the ceilings.
No, no, they're very well aware of those. Yep.
And, and the only other, normally you look and do paving and just an update on what's going on in case someone's wondering what's going on with paving.
Yep. So, so for paving, thank you for reminding me. Um, we were gonna tag team the park and ride paving with the just regular road paving, West, uh, West Park, Adam Street. As a way to save money, as a cost savings, uh, move. If we're not gonna do the park and ride this year, it'll be in the spring. We'll be doing this fiscal year's paving in the spring as well. It just saves us money in mobilization, which can be a hundred thousand dollars or more. So instead of. Yeah. So, um, if we're not doing pay, and it look, it's looking like we're not gonna make it for the park and ride this year. Um, you'll be seeing the paper roll around come May and June. Okay. Questions? Planning Commission, old business, Planning Commission member discussion. So this was the discussion, uh, we had a couple of weeks ago about whether the Planning Commission wanted to reduce their numbers from five to, or from seven to five. I was hoping you'd talk to them. We talked about a lot of other things. We didn't talk about that and I'm sorry. That's my fault. Um, we're kinda, we're kinda focused on those, I mean, rigs and the town plan, but. And one more business coming into town, by the way, there's.
I heard about that.
People, people are taking down, they're taking over Young's. Oh, that's great. And they're gonna, they're gonna have containers there and sell and rent them out there and stuff like that. It, he's, he's looking forward to taking both buildings down at some point.
What do you mean by containers?
Steel, storage containers, the big steel storage containers, the ship containers.
Like those, are they making them?
No, no, no. They're, they're gonna sell and rent them there.
And are we talking like those pods or like moving?
Well, no, they're, they're the containers. They're not the pods. They're the container containers, the steel containers. So they'll have upwards of fifteen containers on there. Like, oh yeah, like.
Like one way on the side of the building, down to the playground where we, we rent a, a container that we keep stuff in for the sports equipment and stuff. It's that kind of container.
Standard shipping container. You can move on a truck, right? A ship.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So it's, that's his business and he's moving it to Fairhaven. So that's good. He's got a lot of money down there. That's a great idea.
It's a good place to work. Yeah.
How many are they gonna do with them? Employees, are they going to do?
Uh, I think him and his wife and probably one other driver. I don't know that for sure. But, you know, he's, he's, uh, he's looking, he's pretty positive about the, the space and he's pretty positive about the future.
Yeah. Location right next to the highway. It's good to have a business.
The, the, the other thing, I, I take full responsibility for not bringing that up. I, I totally didn't talk at all about it. We were kinda hoping that you were gonna have somebody, but, but, uh, we didn't talk about it.
No one's come forward at all?
No.
It's kinda, it's, it's a good, it's a good thing to be on. It's a good board to be on. I, I think, I really do. But I will, uh, we.
Has it been advertised plenty and people realize it?
Advertised it. I don't know how effective advertising is. Where'd you, where'd you put it? In the, uh, our paper record? Did you?
I wouldn't put it in the paper. I dropped it on Facebook.
See, there's, there's a lot of people that, how much would it cost to put it in the paper?
Hundred and twenty bucks.
I don't know what you guys think, but I.
Maybe post it here? Post it in the building?
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a bad idea because people are through here enough. But I mean. Put something right on the window or near the window right here. More on it. Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we, we can take your time, talk to it.
We've got a meeting in the, what was it, September sixth. So I promise that we will talk about it. The, my, my guess is people wanna keep it at seven, but if we can't, we can't, we can't.
And with the work you're doing, having, having it at five, I get it. The quorum is a lot easier. Three to the board.
Regarding that, guys, instead of actually making an advertisement, why don't you make it a news item? And put it in as a news item?
And do a press release. Yeah.
Thank you, Roseanne.
That's not a bad idea at all.
It's cheaper that way. Are you, are you gonna send me that article tomorrow morning?
No. All I'm saying is, if you're sending them a news item, they aren't going to charge you. I get to do the fundraising for the Southwest Freedom Riders when newspapers would change hands.
If they pick it up, that would be cool. Yes. They don't have to, but that would be worth, worth the effort.
They are begging, these smaller papers are begging for news items to put, particularly the Lakes Region. Free Press, they're begging for news items. So whatever you can provide for them.
Worth a try. Anyway. Read that one to death. Um, because it's my fault. Letters of support for Building Communities Grant. Two letters of support. This is, uh, this goes hand in hand with the, uh, what we did at the last meeting. Uh, the board approved two grants to go to the state. Uh, the first one is for Donuts of Rutland. Uh, this is their application for, um, the new building they're building to kinda make it more of a eco-friendly green building. If I said that right. So there's that one. And then.
Did you need a motion for those?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we sign the letter of support for the Donuts of Rutland, for the Building Better Communities Grant. I think they asked for twenty-five thousand dollars.
We understand what we're doing. Call those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the second one is a letter of support for the Fairhaven Economic Development Committee Grant. Uh, this grant is requesting one thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And this will help put up business signage, uh, up near the highway pointing, uh, to Fairhaven to get folks to come this way. Hopefully attract some, some additional tourism dollars.
This, this is the one we talked about with the different names of the businesses on it. I'll make a motion that we sign the letter of support from the Economic Development. I'll make a motion that we sign the letter of support from the Economic Development.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Fuel bids. We've got a copy of those, should have.
So this is our annual, uh, we do this every year, get a, get a bid price for our heating oil. Champlain Valley has bid three dollars and five cents per gallon. Local fuels, they, they said they wouldn't give us a hard price, but said they'd give us fifteen cents over rack price. So that would be a floating, it'd be a floating value.
Does anyone know where rack prices are now?
Uh, current prices are three dollars and fourteen cents.
Is that as, is the Champlain bid, is that a solid price that will remain throughout the season?
Yeah.
That's
What did we pay, what did we pay last year?
Three oh five, that's not bad.
You know Glenn, I didn't bring that with me.
When I look at them, I'm saying, yeah, I, I didn't know if we paid, if we paid three dollars and it only went up five cents. Or did we pay two forty something? Not that, I'm just curious, it's not that it matters, just, these are the bills.
You asked me last year the same thing and I said the same thing, shoot, I didn't bring that. So next year, we will bring it.
That's okay. Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept Champlain Valley at three oh five and lock that price in.
I second that, Glenn.
Anybody, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we got a roof to put on.
Team Mike and Jeff did manage to, uh, to patch up their roof to stop the leak. But, but that roof needs to be replaced. Um, Mike gave me a tour, I don't know, two months ago or so. And that rubber roof has shrunk. And I don't know if this is typical, I'm not a roofer, but it has shrunk down to where the, the caps on the end aren't even covering the rubber anymore. You can see why we would get water into this building. This is the second advertisement for this, this project. Um, out of two advertisements, we've received one bid of one hundred and nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars from Premier Solutions.
Are they gonna replace it in time? Is there any decals on it?
You're gonna replace it with a rubber roof? Yes. They're gonna do the rubber roof and they're gonna, I don't know what you call it, flashing or caps around the edges as well. Yep.
What's your pleasure, folks? It ain't gonna get better.
Yeah, what, what's your recommendation?
Uh, it's, needs to be done.
Good, good.
I mean, it, it needs to be done. You can only put so many Band-Aids on a cup. It's been Band-Aided before, pointed that out to Joe on the front of the building. You can see where they stretched the membrane out and put, um, almost like carpet packs holding it up on the front of the building. It's just, you know, been Band-Aided together.
Anybody got any idea how long that roof has been on there?
Thank you.
The guy that came up to, um, look at it for Premier said that he was involved and he's pretty sure that's the original roof that's been Band-Aided since nineteen eighty-two.
They were, they were doing rubber roofs on it back then?
Yeah.
What was the timing for being able to get this done, if we accept a bid? Did you have any idea?
I wasn't involved in any of that, and I'm surprised
If you'd get it this year?
I had three people contact
Yes, this year.
Okay, so, so if we So if we pass this, they think, they think they can get it done this year?
I talked to, so Jake is the owner of, Jake Helm is, uh, resident, um, and I did see him today and he said, yes, it would be done this year.
Oh, he needs a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Premier Solutions of one hundred and nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for the water plant roof repair.
Is there a second? No second, uh, I don't think it's gonna get any cheaper. It doesn't look bad.
Gosh, I got this dog. Good for you, Blair.
Mosquito.
We gotta move forward, we can't keep
He got me.
Can't keep stalling.
No.
Any other discussion?
I have no context as to what the going rate for rubber roofs are. Is this, is this a decent deal? You know, it's
I was surprised, to be honest with you, I was surprised it was that price. I, I didn't think that was horrible. But I don't, I don't know either. I'm not, I'm not an actor.
I, I, I know
It's a big roof.
There's a definite need for it, but there, we, again, we don't have any perspective about what, you know, you know, I mean, if, and if we, we end up spending a lot more than we should need to, then that's my only concern. And so is there any value in trying? I mean, you said that three people had called.
They had called and, um, you know, like I said, I'm surprised they didn't submit a bid. I just told them, you know.
But this is the second, this is the second time it went out.
Right, we went out and got nothing, spent extra money and we came up with one. Spending money three times advertising, I'm, I'm, I'm
The other, the other end of that too, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. The other end of that is, this is public, so somebody could bid, you know, fifty dollars less than this.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel right if we put the amount out right now.
So it, we've done what we're supposed to do.
Yep, that's, you know, that's our only option. This particular, it's not like I just posted this on Facebook. This, this went to our locals on Facebook saying, hey, we got all this work on. It was posted up to Ver- uh, the Vermont, um, bid website where people, this is where construction folks look for work. Um, there's also advertised in our paper, so it's not like this was a, a secret.
And, and the question, what I'm hearing, saying, okay, I don't, cause I don't know what it costs to put on a roof either. So my, my question to the folks who put the bid out is, does this seem like it's in ballpark, it's a reasonable bid? You not having only one bid to look at? And the answer I got was
It's, uh, I was expecting it to come in about a hundred thousand, so a hundred and nine seemed right there.
That's, that's the reason.
And this isn't the first time Jake's company's been up there. And have been here over six years, and they've been up there twice, two fix small at least, before this whole sidewalk.
I agree, it's not gonna get any better. That all makes sense.
Any other questions? We have a motion on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Uh, for the timeline, uh, he did provide written, uh, a written timeline saying October, uh, late October, early November, and he expects it to take two weeks.
So we're getting this year.
Did he mention any kind of warranties on it?
Not there, no. I will dig through and find it.
Okay, uh, anything? Oh, the, the rec committee, I, I talked with Josh, he didn't have anything, uh, to report. And I, I was at the meeting, Joe was at the meeting, there was, uh, they pretty much got their officers in line and who they're gonna, who's gonna do what and and they're gonna, I explained that they had to have minutes and they had to warn their meetings, and I kinda ended up just but they're going, they're pretty energetic right now, so we'll see where they go. The, the one thing I would say is I went down, cause I, I don't have any reason to be at the playgrounds, so I don't go. And those fields are in terrible shape. They're in terrible shape. We, we need to cooperate and get them back to some sort of, some sort of level. That, it's just, I mean, it's, it's not anybody's fault except we just, you know, no, the squeaky wheel gets oiled and they haven't been squeaking and and they, they came in.
I'll tell you, I, I walked it, uh, walked the fields about two weeks ago and, uh, I only saw one field that I thought looked like it was in reasonable shape. And then Chad told me that actually all five of them are being used and it's like I was, I was shocked.
Yeah, they're, they're rough shape.
Yeah.
And it's, 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 we gotta make, we gotta make them better. And we'll do that, the town will cooperate with the rec committee. That's, there, it was, I was, I was pretty amazed. Anyways, enough said. Anything in the parking lot? I can tell you the zoning rig, the rigs are at Rutland Regional Planning. They're going to scribe them up for us. They're gonna add the last bit of changes we put in. The new guy, the new guy that's doing, I met with them, uh, last Friday. They are, they are going to do all the, all the, um, scribing, everything they have to do for, to put that into a usable form. We will all have a copy and as soon as we have the copy, we'll schedule a date for the, to submit it to you guys. You get to look at it and then you gotta have a public hearing. And, um, we'll go from there. Uh, they also are going to help us with the town plan. They are going to start, our town plan has to be done revised by June, in June. They're gonna start a reverse timeline of what we have to get. And, um, what was the other thing they were, um, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna help us with that. There will be no cost. It, they, we won't have to set a contract or anything. They'll just, they're just gonna do it. The new guy has already read the town plan and is pretty, pretty knowledgeable already. He seems like a good kid. We'll see how he goes. But he's, uh, he's still in Burlington, so they're, he's working remotely right now. But it looks, it looks good. The town plan, we should have, we should have zoning rigs done soon. I would say middle of September would be, if I don't see him by the first week in September, I'm gonna start calling again. Um, and we should have the zoning, we should, we're, our goal is to be done with the, with the town plan in March, which is about when we need to, to do the, the warnings for, um, for, uh, different, uh, public hearings and things. So that's where they're at, at this point.
DPW Raj, any more? Anything on that?
I called that guy yesterday. Meacham, letter, I forget his first name, Bruce? Yeah, he's not responding, he's not responding to my, uh, to my voicemails. Yeah, we might have to find somebody else. It's been what, a month? More than a month, cause we've talked about this a couple of times, yeah, it's been like six weeks.
Is, is this Mr. Meacham at the stake?
He's an independent contractor.
Yeah, I think, but geologist or something.
Anything else? Anything else there?
Our fence and where we have that, our fence.
Uh, around the town green?
Yes.
Nobody's come forward to say they wanted the job?
No bids, no bids. Should we ever, should we post that local or should we get, get some more advertisement? Give you that free press on that also?
I put that in, I can, yeah, I put that in the newspaper and I put it out on Facebook just for, you know, the local folks, to, you know, they're local contractors. It, it's tough to get anybody to do anything right now.
And the way the weather's been, I've, I'm not surprised the painters
I'm sure they're behind, they're all behind.
I don't know if they're gonna, if you could get them this year.
Just from my experience at the insurance company, every, all contractors, no matter where you're talking plumbers, electricians, carpentry, roofers, they're all, I mean, at this point, they're all like into next summer.
All right, well, we'll keep, I'm sure the itty bitty committee will be asking soon, soon about that, if they haven't already.
Yeah.
I've already got some comments.
I'll be darned. Well, I know it's, it's near and dear and I get it. Be nice, it'd be nice to have it done before Memorial Day.
Another thing we could talk about, the sidewalks this year, we haven't got nowhere on them either, no replacements.
Gotta get out there and measure them up. We gotta have the money to do it. I think we had, we decided, what, fifty thousand dollars? So that, that'll, that'll give you a little bit, but
That would be nice to know what that average
It'd be nice and we could do just a little bit each year. Just get started, get a start in the right direction. But we gotta get somebody to bid first. Gotta get somebody interested and wanting to do it.
And we gotta know what's realistic. I mean, I, I don't know how far fifty thousand dollars would get you, you know? For a sidewalk. I have no idea. Know what to guess.
Yeah, even that, that's, that's pre-COVID.
I did get a bid for this, uh, the sidewalk in front of the Memorial here, yeah, and it was, it was high.
Yeah.
I don't recall what it was, but it was
What did that include? Do you know if that included resetting the curbing?
It did not include resetting, and it, it, what it included was us doing a lot of the prep work. Yeah, us tearing it out.
That sidewalk down there, that curbing's gotta be reset. Otherwise, there's no sense of putting a sidewalk to the curbing that goes like this. So you gotta reset the curbing first. Or another plan to they, you know, separate the curbing from the sidewalk. Put a strip in there and that's gonna look crappy.
Well, the other thing too is they're gonna be redoing that road, correct?
We asked.
Could that?
Well, I mean, that would be where their curbing would get fixed.
We asked, they, they would, they would reset a little bit of curb. Um, when they came through here and paved, they reset this, this little bump out by the driveway. This was last week or even two weeks ago, we asked, we had everybody here at the table. Um, and they said they do small portions, but they're not gonna come through and reset all the curbing. They said that they just won't do that.
Too bad.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, and God forbid they, they just take our money, they don't, they don't ever give it back. That's just editorial, sorry. All right. Board round table.
The only thing I got is, I gotta give the town crew a lot of credit for what they did up at Road sixty-nine up there. They've got that covered and they've done a nice job. Really nice job. They spent, it took them a lot of time. And as short-handed as they are, they done good. They gotta understand that's, you know? They, they were up there, finished up, come down and jumped right on lines the next day. You know? Unfortunately, maybe we should have tried to spread out the lines a little bit here and there, so there was some barking in between, but so, you know? Next time we'll do better. And then, uh, I don't know if, uh, we had that one issue on Academy Street with the brush. I don't know if you've heard anything more about that.
No, I, we asked, uh, I asked if we'd received any response. If not, we'll get somebody down there. That's, that's pretty bad. We're gonna cut it back hard though. I don't intend to go back next year to re-prune that, so it's gonna be cut and it's gonna be cut back hard. We sent
Make sure you're
That, we, oh yeah, uh, we sent a letter to a homeowner.
I know you are, but
We sent a home, a letter to a homeowner saying, hey, your brush is actually in the road. Um, and it, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty bushy.
I don't think anybody's living there. It's empty.
Uh, there were a couple of items that I wanted to discuss, but I think that I'm gonna table them for a bit, cause I wanna kind of mull over them a little, so. The only, uh, comment I have is, uh, at least now you can legally call me a Vermont lawyer and well, actually, it was, it was very unexpected. Um, the state, the Vermont Supreme Court is granting licenses to out-of-state lawyers who are in the state uh, for the purpose of assisting flood victims with claims and things like that, so. While it is only temporary until I get my permanent license and I can only provide pro bono, uh, advice to flood while it is only temporary until I get my permanent license and I can only provide pro bono, uh, advice to flood victims, it's still, you know, I, I can still say that I am, am a Vermont lawyer, which is nice because I've been, every, every time people have asked me what I do, it's like, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not admitted to practice in Vermont. So that one I can disregard for now. If you have anyone that you know is having issues with, uh, with flood claims or anything of that sort, I'm certainly happy to talk to them.
I should call my brother.
Do you have a card?
I do not. I have not got, you know, I, I have not printed them up.
When you get a chance, stop by the office and bring me a card.
Okay.
Or at least get me your phone number.
Okay.
Sometimes our clients have, you know, in their claim process, they call us for advice and it's like, we don't, this isn't what we do. That's, and I've just been referring them to the FEMA, uh, the Office de FEMA opened up at the, in Rutland. But it...
I mean, I, I don't even, I mean, it, it, it's very unclear as to the scope of what they want me to do. Um, it may just be acting as a liaison between the, the client and FEMA or something of that sort. But yeah, I'll come, I will come by the office. I'll be happy to drop, yeah.
Thinking about what Rich brought up, the idea of, uh, identifying our most in-needs sidewalk and trying to tackle that if we can find some sort of bidder. And as far as fifty thousand will get us, I think that at least will be a good start. Uh, the other thing I had, and I, forgive me if it was brought up, um, earlier in this meeting or earlier in the last meeting, I don't remember reading it. But there is some interest from Poltony in collaborating our recreation departments. That's something that I'd like to explore further with some folks in Poltony to see what we can do. And the, the aim and intention is to keep kids as busy in a healthy way as possible so that, uh, adolescent mischief or even adolescent crime stays low. Uh, and there's some healthy outlets out there, so, looking forward to conversation with their, uh, their select board and rec department.
We had Ben and Brooke here earlier and they were talking the same thing. Your name should, was mentioned to your ears, should have been burning as, as being the first that's come, so that's good.
Uh, you're, so you're thinking of going to the, that passive?
Yes.
Okay.
It's two days during the middle of the week, so I'll be gone for two days.
Which one is this?
It's the, the insurance seminar for VLCT passive, which is our insurance company. It's, it's worth you, just to find out what's happened.
I was gonna say, this is, so it's a two-day, um, I don't know, of conference, yeah. Uh, where all the towns or many of the towns get together and the VLCT puts on, uh, presentations about municipal management. It would, if you had time, it would be...
What is it?
The twenty-sixth of, yeah, twenty-sixth of August or September.
This is...
Oh, yeah.
I have one of those.
It's, it's really...
Great for new members to hear and see how different things in different towns use.
The other one is the town, the town, uh...
Annual meeting.
The annual meeting that they have. That's in October.
Is it only, is it only one day or is it, or is it two days?
Okay. I'll send you, I can send you the link to the, to registration and stuff. There's some, there's some decent, uh...
Yeah, I have, I have considered going to some of their programs.
September what?
One, two.
September twenty-sixth.
You can keep that, actually.
Alright.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, so let's make sure that we, we put something on the agenda to make somebody a voting member. We have to designate that. Could we do a little research before budget season about the transfer, the West Haven fee? I know we talked about it last year. I don't think we raised, we raised it a little bit, but we didn't, we didn't, I mean, twenty-two thousand seems very reasonable. You know, I don't know.
They pushed back a little bit.
Well, that's alright too. I mean, you know, they, they look at, look at the alternative form too, so. But I, if that's, if that's fair, and I don't know how you compare, I guess you go and look at other towns that do that, that share that.
Well, I, I think, I think if I remember right, the discussion was to have it an incremental, you know, raise up over the next like five years.
Right, yes.
But what we, well, what I did to, to kind of make it fair was determine what each individual in Fairhaven was paying. Right? Divide that up by per capita and then, I think they got a small bump because they're out of town. You know, they're not our residents.
Which is fair.
You live here, you pay more. But yes, I will bring that information.
Okay.
That's it. Uh, expenditure, revenue report.
Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and one cent.
Do a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, revenue.
Make a motion to accept the general warrant of four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight and thirty-two cents.
Is that some of the notations on that?
The, the largest ticket item was the dump truck at two hundred and seventy-eight thousand and some change. And then there was, uh, another town hall, uh, a payment of twenty-five thousand and then Blue Cross Blue Shield at sixteen, so.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
And the checkbook status is one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Scary.
Nice, nice to have one.
Tell me again that it's not ever gonna, we're not gonna lose that money. Keep saying...
I hope we're not gonna lose that money. We're not gonna lose that money. We're good, bud. I, well, we're, aren't we supposed to be, didn't we have a million dollars in the past that we didn't wanna?
No, I'm talking about the, the question I always ask about losing because it's not insured past two hundred...
Oh, yeah, no, no, we're, yeah, we're well-covered. Um, we, what do we have? We have a repurchase agreement, so all of our money is covered. Both, and we diversified, so all our investments are, are in a separate bank and below the minimum, maximum. Yeah, we're good. Hundred percent.
We don't need to bury the money in the backyard.
No.
Well, it, I, you guys weren't here, but Benson, Benson got creamed one year. Benson got creamed badly. They had too much money in, in a bank that failed, for lack of a better term. And we, we got hammered, or Benson got hammered. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to go in the executive session under personnel one DSA three thirteen A three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.